Call of order for our Thursday, April 11th Town Council meeting. I'd like to go ahead and start with your legions and Grace Mary, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we can approve, we can do the minutes, and let's go right into Grace Mary.
Oh my goodness, okay.
You're up.
I'm up. Good evening, everyone. It's certainly nice to be back giving a little presentation at the town meetings. Chesapeake Beach had their 125th anniversary this past Saturday. And in talking to many of the people who attended, there were maybe a handful of us that realized that there used to be a racetrack on the town of Chesapeake Beach. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about horse racing. In order to understand the racetrack and what happened with the racetrack in Chesapeake Beach, you have to know a little bit about the Maryland Jockey Club. Oldest sporting association in the United States, founded in Annapolis in 1743 to regulate the sport of horse racing. It has given all the credit for introducing thoroughbred racing in the American colonies. And over the years, the club had a number of very noted members prior to the Revolutionary War, George Washington attended a number of meetings, and in the 1830s, President Andrew Jackson became a member. It wasn't until 2003 that actually the thoroughbred horse became the state horse for Maryland. I'm going to talk a little bit about Bowie and Upper Marlboro because it helps you understand what happened in Chesapeake Beach. The Bowie track was just outside the city limits of Bowie. They had a one-mile oval racetrack. It was called Prince George's Park back in the day. It opened in 1914 under the auspices. A lot of these tracks were open under agriculture, and this was the Southern Maryland Agriculture Society. Timbits for Bowie. It was named for one of our former governor, Governor Oden Bowie. In 1927, the clubhouse and grandstand was leveled by fire. In 1953, a jet exploded over the track. In 1955, a cabin cruiser was found floating in the Enfield Lake. 1956, another fire in the barn area. On March 10th in 1956, their record turnout was 25,917 people. In 1958, a blizzard stranded patrons overnight, and then a train that was on the way to Bowie crashed, killing six. More Bowie tidbits, second barn fire, 13 horses died. All-time record of $2,247,000. The giant race fixing scandal that hit Bowie was Governor Mandel, and for those of you who have been involved with politics, that was just the start because later on, it went to the banks and many other things. The grandstand was actually bulldozed in 2004. Bowie closed, and look at this clubhouse because you'll understand why in just a few minutes. It was considered the premier track for winter racing in the North Beach back in the 50s. It's lost its edge in 1969 when another park opened. Again, the officials at the Maryland Jockey Club, which operated the center, they had planned a long time to close that facility as soon as the new barns and lawns were completed. This is an aerial of Bowie with the grandstand. I put a little black... Wait, does this thing have a pointer? All right. Right there is the grandstand. It would hold 7,500 patrons, clubhouse 3,500 patrons, and you could actually go to dinner. They could serve 750 dinners a night. The stables held 1,194 horses. Marlboro Racetrack. The reason I put this on here is pay particular attention to this stand because the racetrack that was built in Chesapeake Beach, even though we don't have a head-on shot of the stand that was built in Chesapeake Beach, we would guesstimate that it would have looked something similar to this. It was a shorter track than the one that was built in Chesapeake Beach. It opened in 1914. It also was part of the fair circuit. They had their own sheriff scandals. It was probably more named for political scandal than racing near the end. It was the center of a corruption case high in Maryland politics, centering around the fair dates and transfers. The demise of Marlboro, there's a track being demolished. During its run, it would hold a three-week agriculture meet. It had an open-air grandstand. The clubhouse sat, 1,260 fans, and the stable could accommodate 475 horses. It is now the site of the Showplace Arena today, the Equestria Center. Chesapeake Beach Horse Racing Track. The land development company of the Washington and Chesapeake Beach Railroad in February of 1894, they had very grandiose plans. Chesapeake Beach and North Beach were started very differently. Chesapeake Beach was really started as a casino and gambling town. The grandiose hotel plans, it was intended as a resort for the wealthy. The racetrack was built with glass windows that could seat 2,000 people, stables for 600 horses, and this development company ended up going bankrupt in 1935, and all the railroad ties were taken up. This is what was supposed to have been built in Chesapeake Beach. Two huge hotels, and this is all from the railroad tycoons from Colorado. This was your Hotel Patuxent... Uh-oh. What did I do, Joanne? Give me back. Okay. I pushed the wrong button. This is your Hotel Patuxent, and this would have been built a little bit south of what is the Ronin Real today. And this is all on the planted plans of Chesapeake Beach. This is your next grand hotel, and both of these were supposed to be built, and they were both on the plans for Chesapeake Beach. And this is the Hotel Chesapeake. And I'm trying to figure out how to make this little red pointer work.
There it is.
Okay. This was proposed in 1894 by the Washington and Chesapeake Beach Railroad Company. Here comes the plans for the horse racing. What happened was there was a racetrack in Washington, D.C. called the Benning Racetrack. And what the investors from the railroad wanted to do was to be able to take those horses in that track's time and bring them down to Chesapeake Beach. So in October of 1900... Ah, yeah, sorry. The owners requested admission into the National Jockey Club. Now, if the Jockey Club denied their admission, they thought that they could run independently, meaning the railroad people from Colorado. Opening up the racetrack kept getting pushed back and pushed back. Then it was labeled as an outlaw racetrack, and the horse owners and the jockeys were penalized as outlaws if they were going to run a race at the Chesapeake Beach racetrack. So if there had been an outlaw race, it would never have been a reputable track, and they would have never been able to run races again. So in short, the railroad investors from Colorado simply didn't do their homework. No one thought to check with the Maryland Jockey Club, and they built a racetrack, which I highlighted in red over in that corner for you. This is easy to handle. This is your railway tracks coming down. So right in here would be what is today your Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum. This track came right up to the bay, so where Winward Keys are and Tyler's Tackle Shop and the Town Hall, that's where that racetrack was, and the stables are just a little bit south of where Veterans Park was. So all of this was built. They built stables. They built a stand for people to sit. They built a racetrack, but they never went to the Jockey Club to get permission to race. So in the end, two local Chesapeake Beach residents, Lindy and Michael Cochran, used what was left of the Chesapeake Beach racetrack and flew their plane in and out. And that's it for tonight. Anybody have any questions?
Did you put an aerial picture taken? Can you see any remnants of it?
I have an aerial that is so large, I can't lift this up. The only remnant you see is the top of the stable. It was at your event on...
You can see the oval.
Yes, you can see the oval very well. You can see the top of the stable, and you can see the top of the stands. But if you think about how much money to have built all of that, and they just never... They never did their homework. They never thought about making sure it would be okay to actually race there. So yeah, we actually had that aerial at 125th anniversary for Chesapeake Beach. Yeah, anybody else? All right, as usual, thank you.
Thank you, Grace. You have not had the pleasure of going by the Bayside History Museum. You're really missing out. Take a moment to get by there. It's absolutely... That's how everybody comes to town. It's the best museum you'll ever go into. Thank you, Grace.
Oh, you're welcome.
And I want to recognize in the back there, Councilmember Larry Jaworski from Chesapeake Beach. Thank you for coming. And let's roll back back up to item 1C and get the agenda approval. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, let's go right into the minutes of March 21st, 2019, Town Council meeting. Motion to approve, that's written.
So moved.
Any discussion? So moved. Minutes from the April 4th, 2019 work session. Motion to approve?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? All right, let's move right into our public safety report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It was a pretty unproductive march. It's 129 calls for service here in North Beach. It's up from 117 in February and down a little bit from last year at the same time. Any questions?
Council, have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I brought this.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah.
Mr. Donahue, Fred Donahue.
What is the...
Well, correct behavior is unfortunately, that's something that doesn't fall in the hands of us. There may be some underlying issues.
Does this person not have a restraining order or...
He has been banned from about every place in this town in Chesapeake Beach. He's been locked up probably in excess of 30, 35 times. I'm at the point of frustration where I'm going to have to sit down with the state's attorney to see.
Can you do that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I want to see what we can do. Maybe get him some psychological or mental help for a period of incarceration because it's a revolving door. We take him down, put him in, and he walks out. He meets us back before we get done with paperwork. He's a person that's unique and interesting, and I don't know, I'm not a doctor. I don't know what's going on inside of his head, but we're aware of it. Deal with it. I'll give you some feedback on September 6th.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, thank you. Treasury report.
Treasury report, yes. And the most outstanding, well, there's two items. It's hotel tax revenue, it's 1,008,400 for January, and the game revenue was 151,000.
Any questions for us? All right, great. Thank you. All the courts.
All right, good evening, everyone. I want to bring something up that I don't want to lose prematurely, but April 17th, we had a pretty important meeting for State Highway. We're going to get closer and closer to the final review meeting, which is in September. But I bring this up as May 20th right now, and it's going to be discussed at this April 17th meeting. That's the family set up for a meeting for public input, public comment, and public question. That's going to be held school, and the meeting will be from 7:00 to 9:00. And I will update the council and add a work session. We did a work session before that ticket closed, so I wanted to... And we will also put it out on our website right after that April 17th meeting.
We want to confirm that real quick because it could change, but we will know on that day by noon if John Delaney and State Highway M.D.O.'s going to continue that meeting. If it is, every person in town will know about it more than one way.
Plus, I'll have more details for it. We have a lot of public comment about public interest in this. Questions we answer that meeting. Some questions have been submitted already. I'll see how people... John Delaney's there responsible. We've got a president question. We're going to submit them, but that's a way to call it. We'll have to stretch out the project again, have days for closures, and you're kind of going to have to put down on that meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions or anything else in the report?
You all have this report. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank the staff. They did a good job over there. We cleaned out the entrance to the time taking credit, and then that allows access to storm day bike channel there, and got that cleaned. A lot of work today. Pretty good job.
Couple of quick things. So I see here you mentioned that you guys took a CPR class, which is excellent.
Right.
Do we have any AEDs in the town buildings, you know, for the firefighters?
Yeah, we don't have any, yes. We talked about first, but we haven't first.
I've heard there's something named Monica to look into here. There's probably grants out there for that kind of thing, I would think possibly. That might be a good thing to look into if we can. And not to bring this up again, but where are we with the contractor for the crosswalks? And I noticed that there are some crosswalks coming up.
That's a good question.
Right? There's supposed to be a warranty associated with this, so is there any possibility we're actually going to be able to use that warranty?
I met with four different contractors straight out of quarters. None of them would... That's the work that's in place now because all of them are afraid to get that close to mess up the red brick, no, walkway. I met with a guy's daddy, actually. He came out, and they kind of do the same thing, but he doesn't do it for that scale. They do thermoplastic, they do all that. He looked at it, and he wouldn't even do it. We do have a three-year warranty on the red brick and the white. Right now, you can say that we are...
Yeah, we are. Yes. So...
So, isn't it?
We're in the middle of it, but we will update. You want to have facts. I just don't have any yet. We have consulted with our attorney. We have walked every crosswalk. They're taking pictures for every crosswalk. We have had four contractors come out. We are working hard, but right now, I just don't have a solid answer I can give you, but you will have an answer very soon.
For the warranty part, we do so owe the contractor. We had to pay them full because the work wasn't up there. We didn't sub the work, so we had to pay them full. So maybe we can come back to any warranty work because of that.
Yeah.
And that wall come out soon.
Soon. We're working on it.
Tony, can I ask the question?
Yep.
I saw, I think it was on your report, that James Lehrer's coming back out. They're going to do some planting.
He still owes us some plants on the farm. They have to plant the banquet side of the farm, and so he had said two weeks ago, he told them they're going to try to come out as soon as I thought he might be here already, actually. But now is a good time to get those plants in, and we're going to do some rain on people who used to lie. So he promised me he'd be out first part of April. I haven't seen that, and I will put a call in tomorrow.
And how far... So, you know, if you look, you know, insert the yards behind people, I mean, they put some seed down. I think it just washed away. I mean, it's just dirt, you know, basically behind... There's the berm, there's a little bit of grass, and then just dirt around everybody's property. Like, how responsible, how far of land were they supposed to go?
Oh, yeah, plenty of notoriety. I'm talking about that. He is still saying because of all rain and weather and everything. That year, it did come off. We got flooded, it drowned the village, so... But that is up for assessment. It comes down also. But I want to walk in sight with him, look at it, and then carry it out to the point, and then, you know, kind of let stuff up and show him.
If I'm available with works, I'd love to be there because part of it as well, it'd be nice to get a little bit of height back there. I mean, it's sort of a wasteland back there. There used to be the reeds that grew. I mean, they weren't indigenous, but I'd like to see if they did plant something, if there's something with a little bit of height.
I'll give them a call more, and then I'll let you know. Make us come down, continue the crosswalk.
I saw you know, for the pond. Did you ask to come up with a plan to move the fish or keep the fish?
He has actually... This contractor we met with the other day has a 75 plant down on Portable Pool, like swimming pool we set up. So he pumps all the water from the pond into that, and then puts the fish in there. Takes him two days to clean it, then he can put it all back.
Okay.
So we haven't got a front pressure, and so we're waiting to get that slipped, so thank you for the call.
I just know that that was a large donation.
Yeah.
I think we're going to see it.
That's all. That's all. It's me, a lot of contractors. He set up. They do work for a lot. I looked at his resume. It's called... This article, Don, is a website. He worked a lot in this town.
Thank you. And Paul?
So I was just going to add on the 261. I've been contacted by S.H.A. actually twice now. As they're starting to move in the final phases, there are complaints. They want from the pound to right away. It's possible sorboring, outfall issue, so we'll be working with them there by... And working on the MOU library with councilman, mayor, staff. Seems to be doing pretty well. Questions for me?
You all have this report. Any questions for Paul?
I'm curious. I don't know if this is a new piece, Paul, but I noticed on the pump for Main Street, you mentioned that it's not designed adequately. I don't remember... Was that in the report before, or was that after you guys did an assessment? You were kind of assessing that, right?
Well, the pump really doesn't... It really doesn't achieve its peak performance just by the way that it's been built over the years, and seal rise, and, you know, you're getting sudden buildups, but, you know, it needs some... It needs some upgrade probably. It needs some help.
I just didn't know about wording. If that was even a more thorough assessment. I'm just curious, like, the funding we're looking... I know it's always in the report that we're looking, but are...
We are, and part of this is the state. You know, they want to take some water to it, so I hope them, you know, as part of that, they may have to help us fund some of this upgrades.
With S.H.A. maybe, with State Highway? I think that would be nice.
We're approaching S.H.A., Coward County. I mean, we're...
Yeah.
We have a lot in our budget coming up for this stuff, but at the same time, we're going and trying to get these relationships to the point where they're helping us with some of these issues, so we're not leaving any stone unturned.
That'd be nice.
All right, any... Rick?
How are you all doing? See you?
Fantastic.
I think my latest project is for the mayor. We're trying to clean up some of the signage, and basically what we're doing is we're going around, and we're going to map out the Bayside in town, what it says, where it's located, whether it's still relevant or not. We've also been working on trying to locate and identify trees that are kind of hanging over, the walkways or in the public right ways, other than having to deal with one other issue similar to what Mr. Dyson brought up. We have a gentleman down that's had some issues, and I sought some advice from him yesterday, and I actually reached out to the health department, and I didn't get chance to say it earlier, but the health department is going to make a home visit there and see if there's some they can do to help assist that family with correcting these problems, so.
Yeah, we have a situation on Fifth Street where a gentleman, 30 plus some years old, is taking trash from people's yards and putting it in our alleyway, so.
They cleaned everything up over the weekend, and in a four-day sense, the weekend cleaned up, there's approximately 100 new bags of trash that this person has collected over the course of three nights. And so we reached out to the health department and Department of Health and Human Services. They are going to... They're going to go ahead and make a home visit to see if there's some programs or some other assistance that they can offer to this person. My only concern is we could do like we would normally do with someone else, but I don't think that they're going to find this person responsible for their actions. So we're trying to find some way to give them some additional help and correct them toward the resources where they can maybe manage, manage it all a little better.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Rick?
No.
Dawn?
Hello?
Hello?
I met recently with a representative from the U.S. Census Bureau. They are promoting Census 2020. It might be here soon. The reason they wanted to come to our area, I think they visited Chesapeake recently. His name is Lee Outter. He wants to come and do a short presentation for mayor council. North Beach was rated the lowest response variable score across Coward County in Census 2010. So they wanted to help get the word out about it so everyone can be counted. I guess there's funding and grants available and medical assistance and things like that based on the numbers. So I met with him, and we're coming up with a plan on how he can do some outreach efforts. So first, he'd like to do a presentation here, then he wants to attend the farmer's market in our community spot to, you know, promote there. There's also job opportunities for people in the area during the census, so he'll be familiar with that as well. And that's about it. He'll just keep in touch with me, and I'll share material and take care of it.
You have a full detailed report. As I said, if you have any questions, definitely reach out. A lot of moving parts right now. Thank you. And Lisa? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Veronica. Veronica, I apologize. Sorry about that.
Good evening. I wanted to add one thing to what Dawn said about the census, that it is very important for us to do the census and for everyone to answer the census because it has a lot to do with funding in our public schools, on our streets, and when we apply for all of these grant funds. So whatever we can do to get the word out, it's important that everybody fill out their census report. Couple things I'm working on is taking really a step back and looking at planning. We finished the plan for sustainable communities for the state of Maryland, and we're awaiting the word for our recertification for that. The recertification for the Sustainable Plan gives us the ability to keep applying for state funding. As you know, Community Legacy, couple of the other funds that the state has, so it gives us that eligibility. We're also looking at a grant that we're writing for resilience as it relates to all of our water infrastructure, assessing the flooding that's happening in certain streets and certain houses. And so we're trying to package all of that within a plan and then actually go after a couple other funding sources like the Community Legacy to incorporate some of the things that we talked about within that plan. So that's some of the things that I'm working on.
Any questions? Any questions? Great, thank you so much, and obviously, there's a lot more, everybody's doing, we, our goals get your report out Monday, see everybody, all the residents, council members have time to review it. Veronica's been working hard, I, I, her and I talk a lot, where can we, keep finding us money, just keep finding us money, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, Lisa, tell us one thing you'd like to pass on.
I'm Lisa Bear Garrett, I'm the Director of Eco-Tourism and the Head of Community Conservation, in case you haven't met me, this is just the beginning of my, end of my first month, beginning of my second month. We've been doing a lot, we've been working with Veronica and all the different staff here, helping me get on board, I really appreciate everybody's help. I also talked to Mr. Slier from Environmental Center, to try to learn more about living shoreline, against current community conservation that is going to have at work, so I'll be there with him as well. And by only two big things that are happening right now, is we are greening out our Earth Day tree planting at Wildland Overlook Park on April 23rd with the Environmental Committee at 11 o'clock, so if you want to come, you might just plant trees and celebrate Earth Day on April 23rd at Wildland Overlook Park. And my first big event, with the help of Dawn, helping put this together, I'm having a migratory birthday at the Sunrise Garden, where we're going to celebrate looking back the Ospreys that have been back already and quite celebrating themselves, if you noticed that. Inside the pier, and I have all kinds of giveaways, and we're also going to be talking about plastic pollution, we're going to be giving a cleanup on May 4th, because that's to plant the town, and we're going to do a cleanup at the Walton Beach Preserve, and use some of that plastic and trash that we collected to talk about how to be the solution to plastic pollution, which is the theme for World Migratory Birthday. So we have these flyers up front on your way out, and hopefully you'll come out to one of our events. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, her reports in, I'm very excited, it is Lisa's second month, but she's been running crazy with a lot of stuff going on, I think you're going to see a lot more events, and even partner with Grace Mary back here with some events, Boys and Girls, Wildland Overlook Park, you're going to see a lot, Fisher Derby, I shouldn't let that out yet, but she has a fishing derby coming on, I mean, it's going to be a lot of stuff that you're going to start seeing in North Beach that we haven't seen in a while, so I'm really excited about that. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go down to the public comment. If you have a public comment, you can go to the microphone, say your name, your address, and let us know.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
My name is Steve Stoller, I've been a resident of North Beach for thirty-three years now at the corner of Second and Greenwood. I've talked to you, Mayor, briefly, Donnie as well, about the problem at Second and Greenwood, namely Greenwood Avenue between Second and Third, basically Second and Oak Street. At the narrowest point on Greenwood, we've got about sixteen and a half feet of road from Oak Street to Third, there's thirty-six feet wide, and two cars can park on either side, and two cars can pass. Between Oak and Second, two school buses can't pass, we have since San Francisco State's went up there, that's become one of the busiest corners in the, in the community, in the town, and we have emergency vehicles, we have garbage trucks. Personally, I'd rather be in an ambulance going forward than backwards, but the school buses can't pass one another, and they come from opposite directions on that corner. So we have talked about shoring up where it's breaking away on the east side of Greenwood, probably about two feet now, in just the last couple of years, I've been picking them up, picking up the chunks of asphalt as they come away, but it's gotten really bad, and I do know that the opposite side, the west side of Greenwood, is mapped out, and it should, I don't know why it wasn't, but it hasn't been paved. There's at least twelve feet of Greenwood on that side of the road, on the west side, that is people's yard, and I do know that the house across from this, across the street from me, when it was purchased a number of years ago, and it was in the remodeling stage, the entrance on that side of the house, on Greenwood's side of the house, had to be shored up, and the main entrance had to be made on Second Street. So that, it was that close to the road, or what should be road. So shoring up my side of Greenwood is a great idea, thank you for that, I know you've been there, I appreciate your attention to that matter, but we do need to leave that ditch there because of the water drainage, and the two pipes you guys put in under our two driveways, mine and my neighbor's, several years ago, that would cause flooding if anything was done to remove that ditch for both properties, because I've seen it in the past with heavy downpours. Also, when that side of the road is shored up, we need some type of markers, some type of reflectors that designate that there is no shoulder on my side of the road, the east side of Greenwood. I pulled a number of cars out of the ditch, a number of cars have been stuck in the ditch because the wheels go down so far on the softer, at the undercarriage, that the car gets caught on the road, and they can't go anywhere after spinning their tires into the mud. So I would like some type of response, if you guys would be so comfortable, to let me know if there's any possible way to widen the road, because that seems to be the best solution, the safest solution, or if there's some type of grandfather clause, or any type of legal issue preventing the road from being widened. Stop signs have been taken out twice on that corner, there is a fire hydrant right there, which brings me to the next point. It is a school bus stop, and people just ignore this stop sign there, they fly through that intersection at twenty or forty miles an hour, total disregard for the sign, and it's not people who can't see it or are not aware of it, these are the same, many of them are the same vehicles, so I wouldn't mind maybe a little bit more monitoring of that corner, especially since it's a school bus stop, the things I've seen, kids on bicycles, skateboards, you know, kids go through the stop signs too, so I'm thinking it's only a matter of time with what I've seen, I'd rather see something done or have this conversation at least before we have that accident that nobody wants to talk about later. So I have pictures, if that would help, of Greenwood Avenue, if you would like them for any, any purpose.
I, we've been there, we're going to definitely address it, and Ronnie there, Lieutenant Alton, will definitely, we'll, we'll talk about having somebody up there monitoring the stop signs, which we do throughout town now, we try to do our best all around town, because there, there are people that go through the signs, and we're going to continue to do what we came to get them to stop.
Well, that, I appreciate that, I've seen the controlling and everything else, but this has become such a busy corner since the building of San Francisco State up there that, again, I appreciate anybody maybe having a thought about it. Thanks for the time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Stoller, can he submit the photos to Stacy and I, or make copies and put in them?
I'd be happy to. This is how wide the street isn't, but, yeah, there's, I don't know if you're.
Yeah, we'll go and scan them and get them to council.
I thought you wanted to have them to council.
Yeah, yeah, we just scan them, that's okay, sir, thank you. Yep, we'll definitely scan them and get them to council. We actually went by there again today, we're looking at it, and we'll update you as we know more about the widening, what can be done, there's definitely an issue there, we just need to figure out the best recourse. Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you to the sheriffs for sitting at the corner of Greenwood and Fifth Street, and stopping all people from blowing through that sign, it's been really nice.
All right, absolutely. All right, if we had no further public comment, we're going to go right into council reports.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. Don't really have much to say except for just be careful out there, there's a lot of kids moving around, I'm just getting them warm, everyone's coming out, and I have here free, I have ten passes for the White House Spring Garden Tour, it's Saturday at 1:00 P.M. Ten passes, they're free to whoever would like to have them, and I have six for Sunday at 10:30, free, so if you'd like to go and check out the garden for a tour, help yourself. And that's it. Oh, and on a personal note, I am expecting grandchild number four in a minute now.
All right. All right. I can't compete with that.
He's going.
What do you have, Paul? What do you have?
No, forgive, sorry.
So I just said, you're always being nice, so make sure you get out, walk around town, and you're enjoying the beauties of North Beach. Thank you.
They just have a high bar, Greg. It's great to see everybody, and I want to just extend another welcome to Lisa Garrett in your position, I just, I think it's so exciting, it's a whole new chapter for North Beach, not only does the ecotourism tie in, which is, you know, our commitment to sustainable, being green, and, but also economic development as well.
I went down there and met with them today, in Prince Frederick.
In the county, right, so, and on that note, as a segue, I will just mention that on April 24th, which is a Wednesday, we are having our, I used to be sort of say second, our first spring business summit, the Economic Development Committee here in North Beach, and Deborah Noyes is back there, she's the liaison to the committee, and this was at the request of the businesses, we're going to have a panel, and you guys should have it on your calendars, and Veronica, and a couple of other people from the county, to share some resources with our businesses, so it's an exciting time, so happy spring, everybody, that's it.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, if you hear your faces right, which is always great, I was hoping Richard would be here, because I'm going to do the final dumpster count, community cleanup, I was saying, I thought it was like seventeen, so, so it's always nice to see that, go out of town, I'm waiting for it to dwindle down, because I don't know where it all keeps coming, but I know I use it, so, and that's all, thank you.
What Mickey was talking about is this weekend, like Saturday and Sunday, we actually had eighteen forty-yard dumpsters filled up, residents were coming left and right for two days, and I think it was double the number of residents this year, what caused the increase.
Well, I know, the spring one, it's always wetters, like, when we have good weather, it's busy, when we have bad weather, or it's cold, the plants will be, and when it falls less.
Always less.
Yeah, if you have cold, it's less, but if it's passable, if you have, like, a rainy day one time, so.
So I appreciate you coming, I have three free pens that I'm going to give away.
Nice try.
Is there not a competition? Thank you, thank you. I will not compete against you, because I know you're so, don't worry about that.
Right, of course.
That's right. Other than that, thank you so much for coming, it's always a pleasure to see everybody out in the audience, and I'm going to come up with something better next month, I can say that now. Other than that, can I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? So moved, thank you so much.